Good evening. It's Tuesday, April 3rd. I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Very happy to have a full house here and I'm calling this meeting to order. May I have a motion for approval of last meeting's minutes from March 20th?
Second.
Any corrections or amendments? All those in favor? That motion passes. We have time for public comment. May I invite any of the folks who are here this evening to come forward to the microphone, identify yourself with your full name, and address your comments to the board?
Hi. My name is Katie Clark. I'm a parent of a first grader at Chanceller.
And I'm Sarah Rosenblatt, a veteran two child parent at Chanceller.
I want to start before I start reading. I wanted to make some eye contact for a moment. I just want to let you all know that I personally appreciate the work that you do. I know that this budget process is not an easy one. Actually, don't know, but I'm learning. And I appreciate everything that you guys have put forth so far. Just want to let you know. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of concerned parents regarding the budget gap and proposed cuts in our district. We are concerned that there's a top of the administration as well as additional wasteful spending in our district. While we are not privy to every line item, it is clear that overall our district spends about the same per pupil as neighboring districts like Red Hood, but we spend about 2% more on administrative costs. There are other line items in which we appear to spend way more than neighboring districts, and we would appreciate more transparency on what is being spent and why. One thing is clear: we are not spending more than neighboring districts on teachers and direct instruction to students. So when the district presumably proposes to make cuts and reductions to teachers and staff who have direct contact with students rather than cutting waste in administrative costs, we must ask why. Many parents are only now becoming aware of the proposed cuts and how they will negatively affect our schools and our community. In the last 24 hours, a petition has circulated and is already at almost 100 signatures. Actually, it's at 102. It reads as follows: Superintendent Joe Phelan and the Board of Education for Rhinebeck Central School District are considering instructional costs to meet an approximate 500K budget gap. Cutting teachers' salaries and hours will invariably undermine morale and lead to talented teachers leaving our local schools for better-paying jobs and a more supportive environment. We, the parents of Rhinebeck Central School District, students, request administrative cuts in lieu of instructional cuts wherever possible. We're concerned that the current superintendent and the Board of Ed stand on the brink of diminishing the reputation Rhinebeck has as a well-performing district with an excellent education and top-notch teachers. And now Sarah's going to read some of the comments from the petition where you can sign and then make a comment below.
I'll just read a few and we'll be handing this over to you. One parent says, "Cutting teachers' salaries is not an acceptable solution to close the budget gap. Our children and the teachers who spend so many hours of their lives caring for and educating them deserve better. If it's time to tighten belts, the administration has a moral obligation to do so too." Another parent says, "Please do not cut the classes or teachers that work so hard for our kids. We do request wherever possible to look elsewhere for cuts, including if needed administrative salaries and positions. Thank you." Another says, "Our teachers put forward so much effort and care for our children. Cutting their hours will impact the stability and quality of our children's education." Rhinebeck Central School District is an exemplary system that's already stretched in. By making instructional cuts, we undermine the foundation of our educational system and greatly shortchange our students. I'll read one more. "I sat through the last board meeting to listen to and heard the administration talk about cutting teachers' electives and specials as a way to try to control the budget made me upset. These kids need the great teachers they have. The cuts need to come from somewhere other than the education. Administration offices and personnel needs to be reviewed for where the cuts can come from. The people that know the kids, who know their names, have seen them grow, should not be the ones that we lose and take away from."
And just in closing, it hasn't gone unnoticed that this budget problem keeps happening every year, and it cannot keep being blamed on declining enrollment or unexpected costs. We demand a balanced budget which respects the professionalism of our teachers and puts the education of our kids first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to give us the documents?
Thank you.
I'll email updated versions as they come in.
Okay, thank you. Others who wish to comment? There's going to be another moment for public comment, but you might have to wait for a bit, so.
Hi. Yes, my name is Jennifer Zenger. I'm a parent of a kindergartner in Rhinebeck School. And I really just want to second what Katie and Rosie said, that we are banking on having continued, full, strong relationships between staff and children here. And in order to do that, we have to have a continuity of care for our teachers. And it feels like a budget that puts teachers in a position of questioning the commitment of the school to them puts that in danger. And we are kindly asking that we really reconsider how it is that we're pulling money to cover the deficit so that we are not compromising the quality of education for our children, and most importantly, what it means for those teacher-student relationships. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Selden, approach.
If I'm going to repeat, my name is Frank Zellweger. I have two girls in sixth grade. And I confess, I speak from enlightened self-interest, right? We're here in this school district for the kids. I want them to get the best. And, oh by the way, the value of my house comes into play too. Someday I'm going to sell it and I'd like it to be worth more because this is a great school district, not less, because it isn't. I still struggle with the numbers, and maybe what we need is more transparency. Rough numbers, and Tom, if I'm way off, because I know you know them precisely, you can correct me, okay? Last year, we took about 4% cap increase, right? We went over and passed by, barely passed six votes or whatever, and maybe 3/8, whatever the number was.
Three sound.
And something close to a 2% decline in enrollment. And this year, we're going to take 2.5%, presumably unless something changes in the budget process, and again, have something close to a 2% in decline in enrollment, whatever, 1.5, whatever it is. And I add those two years together, and over two years, we'll have increased our cost per student by 10%. I don't understand why we're cutting. I don't understand how we can't, how, why we're, I don't, I'm at a loss why we're having a conversation about taking services away when we're growing that much. And quite honestly, it frightens me because what happens when the student population stabilizes or goes up? We're really going to be in trouble. Somewhere in this, we're missing the equation, right? We're all here to educate kids. I went through, I clicked on Nish.com. It's one of these big databases, real estate databases. Anybody can go look it up, that ranks school districts and so forth, okay? I found about a dozen school districts, we, by the way, out of 600 and something school districts in the state of New York, Rhinebeck was ranked 118. So we're in the top 20%, 18%, whatever the exact number is. I found about a dozen school districts in the top 10% with comparable enrollment, I used less than 2,000 kids. I know we're about 1,100 give or take, right? But I tried to use some range. And equal to or lower spending per student. Edgemont, Rybrook, East Williston, Cold Spring. I got a list of them here if you want them, okay? About eight, 10, 12, whatever the number is. All substantially better, at least on this ranking, for whatever that's worth, right? If you look at student-teacher ratios, they're all pretty comparable, right? All around 12 to 1, some are 11, some are 13, right? So the numbers are all pretty comparable, but somehow, we're drifting backwards. We're spending, we're adding all this cost, and we're talking about cutting. We've got to change that. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if it's more teachers, less teachers, more of this, less of that, more spending here, there. We've got to have that dialogue, and it's got to start with the numbers. And the one thing I want to pick up on that some of the people were saying before, we've got to have transparency with the numbers. What is it? What's driving our costs that high? If it's administration, let's address it. I don't even know that that's what it is, right? We've got to have that discussion because we're drifting backwards relative to the school districts that we, for lack of a better term, compete with for people. And we've got, we've got to have it, and we've got to have it now, and we've got to get away from this incremental process that doesn't let us prioritize our resources. So I want to help. I can help look at that data. I can help collect other data. I can help you do this stuff. I can, I do this for a living. I can lead workshops to talk about strategy or priorities. Whatever it is, we've got to get this process going. I talked about something similar to this last year, and this year, we're doing the same thing we did last year. So nothing's changed. Now, I know there's a bunch of stuff going on behind the scenes. The problem is, it's behind the scenes. So I don't know what it is. So I just implore you, the money's there. Other school districts have proven they can do it with the same amount of money per student that we've got, and they can do significantly better than we can. Maybe we need to go visit all of them and find out what they're doing that's different than us. I don't know, but we've got to do something because we're going backwards, and we've got to be going forwards. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any others wish to speak? Okay, so as for those of you who are not frequent visitors to our meetings, we are fortunate to have our principals here this evening to make reports on what is happening in their buildings, so let us have your reports.
Good evening, everyone. Some good things happening at Chanceller. I wanted to give you an update because we were a couple of days away from finding out. As I'm sure you know, we did wind up receiving our $25,000 grant, Project Fit American grant. So thank you. Yeah, clearly, I'm thanking everyone that I can think of, because it obviously was a communal event. I wanted to give you some updates on, right now, we're, well, a couple of statistics, actually. We were the smallest school in the 77 schools running supposedly, according to Dan, and we got the second most votes, like something just over 26,000 votes over about five weeks. And in addition to that, the top school, there were, it was just four schools who got it, but the school with the most votes was almost four times our size and mainly had like 400 more votes than we did. So it was actually a really good, really good turnout for a district this size. I wanted to let you know, we're currently working on a few things, setting up a groundbreaking ceremony in May. Reps from, obviously, the companies and stuff that have helped fund this. Installation schedule costs, an opening ceremony, ribbon cutting in October. And one of the good things we also wanted to report out to you was, this grant also came with two years of support for our PE program. So there'll actually be a gentleman or two people who have won years and years ago who actually travel around and work with the PE departments of schools that secure this grant to do actual full-day workshops with a handful of kids to show them how to use the equipment and set up units and things. So we're setting up a time for that to happen too, once it's all installed. So we're getting some of that info, and as I come to the report, I'll give you more updates as we go. I would like to know, Jump Through the Heart Initiative is in full swing. It'll run through this Friday, April 6th, hoping to break our record for previous years, which was somewhere around $16,000, I believe, which we have literally beat our record almost every year I've been here. So that's a good thing. Currently finishing up voting for the 3-4-5 poster contest, and some of the motivators for students to get out there and help include some of us dressing up as characters. One of the things is during gym class, me dressing up as a gym teacher for the day, which I hope we actually make that number because that'll just, I'll have a lot of fun with that. K registration for fall again continues, 2018. Like I mentioned at one point, we have 35 registered kindergarteners for next year at this point. I am starting to track that around the time of year, just because I know we've been talking, like, hey, is this normal for this time of year? So this year, I'm trying to keep track of those numbers approximately so that we have our information moving forward. Last week, we did have those two days that we were able to work with staff, Monday and Tuesday. I wanted to just let, give you an update on what we worked on. We spent some time at Chanceller, working on orienting ourselves and the staff with Next Gen E.L.A. and Math Standards. I wanted to take a moment to thank Becky Green from both scenes for, we didn't know this coming, setting a full day PE. We actually separated K285, which is a slightly smaller group to work with, but we had some, we spent some time doing that. We also spent some time on Monday, taking an initial look at the school climate survey, and we'll be discussing that further at C W, and some other areas. And also, I had asked, when they obliged, we have a math task force that's been in session for this past year to kind of look at new programs. So we had a couple of programs that we had presentations on that really rose to the top for us. So one of the next steps was for the members of that team to kind of present some of the work we've been looking at to their colleagues in their respective grades, so we spent some time looking at. I am gathering information on some of the programs we liked as far as cost, you know, what's off altogether. And I also reached out to four or five local districts to find out if they utilize, so we're trying to pull that information together. So that was part of doing that. We had some, luckily, had some extra time between those two days to do so. I want to let you know, as always, Books Journey in grade four is beginning. I wanted to thank, I know the ransoms are coming this week, to speak to fourth grade students, and I certainly want to thank them. They've always been an integral part of that, of that program, but glad to see that continuing this year. Our PTSO Book Fair at the end of February, I just wanted to give a thanks out to Fern Lox and the CLS staff for working with the PTSO. We were able to put together some donations to buy books for students who couldn't afford them this year, so I just wanted to thank everyone who did that. And a couple other thank yous. We have a relatively new parent in the building, Melissa Cockshaw, who's a manager of second grade as a unit around polar environments, plants, and animals. And she, as a result of some of her experience, has spent time in Antarctica, so actually brought back like an entire garb in the boots, the pressure-filled boots and everything, and did a presentation to each of the second grade classes. So I'm going to thank her as well. She did that right before we went on break, so she spent some time with those three classes in second grade. I also wanted to thank the BMS leadership team for coming and speaking with our fourth grade students today, actually. And John will give you a little bit more information on that, but I wanted to thank him for taking the time and coming over and working with our students for, it was like those collaborations between buildings. Some upcoming events, ELA assessment is next week, the state assessment for 3-4-5, or 3 through 8. And I also wanted to, I wanted to thank Dr. Nig and the high school students for hosting a showing of Merry Poppies for grade 3 through 5, this, and on August 16th. So it's becoming quite a tradition. We will be open for one of those in the Bay of States that morning. We'll be down there a couple hours on the 16th. That's what's happening.
Questions for Mr. Kim?
Wonderful. Congratulations again on the big triumph. Can't get over saying that. I'm just so very excited about it. Thank you for sharing all the good stuff happening in your building.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to share some things that are going on at BMS. As I believe I mentioned in my last report, Health and Wellness Day returns to BMS this year with a resounding success. You recall that it's been increasingly difficult to generate a presenter pool, and this year, through, thanks to Northern Dishes Hospital in particular, but a number of other community members who really stepped up and recruited some of their friends, family members, neighbors, we were able to put together a very, very well-rounded and robust presenter pool. This year, year's keynote speaker was Kyle King. He owns King's Fitness and Waffingers. He nearly set the tone for the day with a very informative presentation on adolescent strength and conditioning training as well as adolescent nutrition. Then students progressed in small groups. They settled through a number of presentations. Some were smaller, where they were educated. Most of those groups were hands-on as well, but they were, it was more of an education about nutrition, mental health, ophthalmology, orthognics, anything that you can think of, soup to nuts, as well as several slightly longer presentations. We call these fitness presentations. There was hands-only CPR training, there was yoga dance, there was martial arts, there was Pilates, a whole host of offering for our students. So we were excited about that. We were excited, you will recall that we weren't able to run this program last year for the first time, and we're excited to continue, and next up next year is Artists in Action. Yesterday, thanks to Rhinebeck Science Foundation grant, in collaboration with ENTAP, an education network of teachers and artists, seventh grade students begin a week-long art and movie project during which they're learning about anatomy and the skeletal system, they're actually analyzing their own bodies, their own movement, observing their own skeletal structure, the collaborative work of muscles and joints, and how movement evolves into shape and function. And then they're working with local artists, Martha DeVias, Mimi Romaniski, and Pat Sexton to create life-size sculptures using newspaper. And as I'm anticipating and hoping we're planning on doing as we did last year, they then displayed all of those life-size skeletons that look like a graveyard up in the Mosaic foyer at BMS, but it was pretty impressive to see. So I will have a share of that to have with me. Today, members, as Brett said, members of the Peer Leadership Club went over and worked with fourth grade students at CLS. They taught them about the takeover of the Netherlands by the English forces in 1664 as part of their Dutch history unit. I've talked before about trying to get our students into CLS to work with our younger, our younger district students. We have plans in the works right now. Several grade levels have already been worked with this year, and we have plans in the works right now to work with second and third grade students on a couple of different projects later on this spring. In the coming weeks, BMS will welcome Phoenix Kawamoto into health classes. She's going to share her diversity education and sensitivity training program titled Cultivating Compassion with all of our seventh grade students through the art of storytelling, discussions, a focus on issues pertaining to diversity and prejudice and bullying. The program will kick off with a grade level assembly next Thursday, and that'll be followed up later in the month, I believe, April 17th to 25th, with small group presentations that occur in all of the seventh grade health classes. Next week marks the beginning of the year state testing with ELA, with the cooperation of Dr. Davenport and high school faculty and staff, who've always been able to create an optimal testing environment for our students. Look forward to doing so again this year. You may recall that this year, testing has been reduced from three days to two days for each of the administrations, both ELA and Math. I look forward to providing some feedback on the new structure in my next, in my next quarter. Beginning next Thursday, thanks to a grant from the PTSO, BMS students will have the unique opportunity to participate in a six-week-long activity learning about performing improvisational mapping. For many years, seventh grade students have been working with television film and Broadway actress Jenny Villan, when they completed their Seattle Lich Trials unit, and now we're able to bring her back. She's going to work with a group of students, sixth through eighth grade. We're looking forward to that. Parents are going to be invited to view performance slash, you know, workshop at the very end on May 17th, so we're looking forward to that. On May 2nd, John Halligan will present to both middle and high school students during the day as well as parents that evening. After tragically losing his 13th grandson to suicide, Mr. Halligan spearheaded anti-bullying legislation in Vermont, and he's presented to thousands of students and parents about the need for more awareness and prevention of bullying, cyberbullying, and suicide in teens. You'll recall, many years ago, I think at this point, probably eight or nine years ago, he presented to the middle school circle of R. N. B. On May 3rd, the spring concert season kicks off with our chorus concert. On May 4th, the seventh grade band will travel to New York City to attend a samba concert at Lincoln Center. They are performing a samba piece, so Mrs. Albrecht is excited to expose them to that. Finally, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Frischman and the seventh grade team, with a tremendous amount of financial support from a number of grant-funding organizations, this entire program is costing, well, it costs about $8,000 to pull off, and it's not costing us a dime. Through the support of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, PTSO, Teaching in Hudson Valley, Arts and Education, and Alana Historic Site, seventh grade students will take part in a series of field trips for the entire week from May 21st to 25th. So activities are going to take place at Sopas Meadows, Atalanta, at Sprague Farm, and throughout the village of Rhinebeck, tying hands-on learning with each of the major academic subject areas. So I look forward to sharing the details on that endeavor.
Questions for Mr. Kim?
Really wonderful to hear about all of those granting institutions supporting that experience for our students, and as we were just saying, Chancellor, we need this, this kind of support more than ever, so, you know, thank you to you and everyone who's worked so hard to pull together the application process that clearly goes into making this happen first.
Good evening. As I usually do, I'd like to begin by updating you on some BLPT news. Our spring day of service, assuming that spring arrives, could take place on May 12th. The plan is to have some of our students work on our memory garden here, and there's also an opportunity for some trail maintenance work at Mazurala Park. Our community service coordinator, Mr. Jutton, is partnering with the park to organize that opportunity. And academic updates in the English department. April is the cruelest month. It's also National Poetry Month, and our department, with the help of the Creative Writing Club, is sponsoring our students' participation. This is going to include a morning announcement and a mini poetry reading once a week on Wednesday's, and students will be invited to a selected poem from a collection for Poem in the Pocket Day. Students take their poem, decorate it, and then they can share it with a friend or family member. Right? In the Social Studies Department, members of our department attended a conference recently sponsored by the New York State Social Studies Teachers Conference. Among other topics, they were introduced to some software which facilitates virtual field trips, understanding of pornography, supports note-taking and other collaborative work, and I look forward to hearing more feedback from the department about other possible uses within that content area. In our arts departments, our chorus and band are planning field trips. Our chorus will take part in the education festival, and our band will be traveling at a future date to attend a rehearsal of the New York Philharmonic. I'd also like to bring your attention to the fact that the 12th Annual Rhinebeck Central School District Art Show entitled Collective Artistry will open, the opening will be Friday, May 4th, and it's going to take place at the Star Library this year. And this features work from our student artists on all three of our school buildings. The Physical Education Department, students have begun their project adventure unit. This unit begins with team-building activities amongst students. It culminates with students participating on some of the high ropes elements. And I should note too that that's voluntary participation on high ropes elements. In the Guides Department, just as an update, we will begin drafting next year's master schedule this week. In the Co-Curricular Department, our Debate Club will be traveling to Bard on Friday to participate in its debate tournament. Our Creative Writing Club will be traveling on Friday to attend LitCon, which is a conference of high school students. They'll be working on workshops developing literary magazines. I'd also like to note that the Creative Writing Club, with the sponsorship of the RSF, hosted Design Thinking workshops several weeks ago. Students were introduced to Design Thinking, which is a process companies use to develop products and the best ways to develop ideas from a group. I'd also like to note, of course, that our musical is approaching. This year, for the first time, the Drama Club piloted an online ticket sales platform, which seems to be working very well. Tickets are currently available also in the main office this week and next week, and are available at the door. Recently, the Kingston LGBTQ Center held an art gallery full of student art that spoke up against bullying. One of our own students submitted a beautiful watercolor, which was included in this, in this show. I'd like also to recognize the work of our student council in commemorating the victims of the Parkland school shooting. of the Parkland school shooting and creating a very powerful assembly in the North Side on March 14th. As a follow-up to this student-led ceremony, students were invited to express their opinions on this matter in the form of letters to local, state, and federal politicians, writing templates, and support was offered to students in the Writing Center, and we sent a number of letters to our elected representatives. Happy to report that the yearbook has been updated and sent to the publisher. And if you're looking for some signs of spring, for me anyway, the fact that senior t-shirts are in today, and that seniors have ordered their caps and downs is a sure sign of the approach of spring. Looking ahead, a couple of weeks will be administering advanced placement exams. We'll be administering 203 exams to 120 students. In addition, in May, we'll be administering three Regents Field Tests, one in geometry, one in physics, and one in chemistry.
Questions or comments? Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we are ready now for our budget development update from Tom.
All right, in front of you, you have documents for the fifth draft budget and some fairly good news on a couple of fronts, so...
May I interrupt for a second? For those of you who are leaving, there are some interesting things in this new budget update, so just, you might want to stay and listen for the, but go ahead, go ahead, but just come on, come on the, come look on the website for the new information. I think you'll be happy to see it, okay?
No pressure.
Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted people to know.
So if you go to the document in front of you, which is our development process, which brings us from the rollover and all the changes, which brings us to our new draft five, I'd like you to go to the fourth page of this document where we left off at the end of draft four, when we had a gap of $325,044, the amount above the tax levy limit. So we've had a couple developments occur since the fourth draft, and the biggest one of all has been the state aid runs. The state aid runs were, I don't remember exactly when they approved it, either Thursday of last week, I think, or maybe Friday. It was approved, and foundation aid for our school district went up $72,445. So in our first draft, we only, yeah, I would take our legislative side. Still don't like the tax cap, but this is, at least they've helped out here. In the first initial run that we received, the governor's, was only a $5,000 increase to foundation aid. This added another $72,000 on top of it, so our foundation increase was $77,000 this year, which is very significant. As Joe was saying, I just couldn't believe when we got the runs that it was that positive for us. And there were only changes in foundation aid. There was no changes along with anything else as far as BOSI's, transportation, high-cost aid, so there was no changes there, but a nice significant increase to our foundation aid. Still well below where the state should be having us. We should be getting actually a couple, many more hundreds of thousands of dollars, which we've missed out every single year for quite a number of years, not fulfilling their obligation, but they have their own budget issues. So that's on the revenue side, an additional $72,445. But we do have two other changes. One of them is an addition. I had to add $5,000 into it. Our Waste Management Company is fulfilling the state contract, which we were paying less than we had to in the past, but they brought that to our notice, so we had to add some money back into our budget to cover those costs for next year. And if we flip over to the last page, you'll see there a reduction of $42,000 out of our Occupational Education Program. If you'll recall, we started with a fairly high number to start the process, but as our students decide which programs to enroll, this is juniors, sophomores becoming juniors, whether they want to participate in our Career and Technical Institute at BOSI's, the numbers have dropped from what originally was proposed by the high school, and four additional kids backed out of going to CTI and will be coming to this school 100% of the time. So we're able to reduce the budget by additional $42,000. So as we take a look at this, and we see our budget-to-budget is 2.46, our current tax levy is 3.28, we have to get to 2.51. So we now have, the amount above the tax levy limit is 215,000, let's say 600. So we've gone up, we've gone down basically about $110,000 from where our draft four left off. So that's kind of positive news. That's $110,000 that we don't have to go through and take a look at. So that was positive news, but that's as far as we're going to get. There's going to be no other changes, no additional revenue sources, that state aid was our last piece, and so I think this is where we, this is our gap, that we need to close between now and April 17th. Actually, we could go to April 19th, which is a Thursday, that is the last day to adopt a budget. So that's where we are as far as our current budget that's above the tax levy limit at this time. So 215, 600 is really basically where we're at. Any questions about this fifth draft here from any of the board members? Okay, so, all right. So at your place two is you'll have the revenue back up, and you have the expenditure back up for your binders, but like I said, there's only been three changes, one on the revenue side and two on the expenditure side, so not too many changes in these documents other than what we highlighted in the process going through. Also in front of you are two documents, Tier One options, what we're calling in Tier Two options, that look to close that gap. On the Tier One options, we have a little over $256,000 on that list, and on Tier Two, we have an additional $286,000 of potential budget reductions. So I don't know how we want to discuss this and move forward. I mean, this is your board meeting, I don't know how you want to discuss amongst yourself those that are in front of you, your options.
Do you want to just walk us through, particularly since we have a lot of people who are, who have tried to follow the process pretty closely, if you could tell us about any shifts that may have taken place, things that were previously in Tier One that are now in Tier Two, or...
Yeah, so we did have one on Tier Two at our last board meeting, but our last board meeting, we also accepted the retirement of a CLS typist, and that actual position was on Tier Two at that time, but after reviewing the position, we were looking to not fill that position. There are three typists in the building, two 12-month and one 10-month. This would be really reducing, really reducing a 10-monther or eliminating a 10-monther, but also adding $15,000 for making sure that this works, because, you know, this would be a little bit of, I don't want to say experiment, but that's not the right word for it, but the unknown. Because over the past 10 years since I've been here, the, what we have to do as far as for the APPR and keeping track of everybody's attendance and grades and parents and everything, we decided that it was prudent for us to not completely eliminate this 10-month position, but eliminate the position, but add $15,000 for the unknown, and can that be done with too? We really don't know until it actually occurs, unfortunately, but we, I think we believe it could work. So that's, that's one of the changes that's on there that's been added from Tier Two and put onto Tier One. One of the other changes that was put on this one, it's been on here, but I reduced the amount of the savings, and that's under the operation and maintenance. We have a retiring maintenance worker, and we were looking to create a hybrid position, a groundskeeper slash cleaner, and that's really taking someone on currently on our staff, still being a part-time cleaner, but also being a part-time groundskeeper. The original savings was $68,000, but our Director of Operation and Maintenance also is looking for that same thing at which we're talking about with the chancellor typist is, there's that unknown. We're losing a complete person, and you never know with snow and all those type of things whether or not it's going to completely work out, so that's a little bit of safeguard, and if next year we find we don't need to use the money, then next year those monies can be taken out of the budget. But our director was becoming a little worried when he started thinking about the logistics of it, and where certain times of the year, it's very heavy on the groundskeeping and certain things on the cleaner side wouldn't always be accomplished, so he wants the ability of flexibility to have a substitute come in or something to take over, you know, to help make sure that the buildings are clean, because as you know, it won't be as clean by reducing it by half a person, so he just wants to make sure he has some ability if, if he needs that. So those were the changes that were made to Tier One. So on Tier Two, really it was basically, we had that typist position for CLS on this side of the page with Tier Two, but that's the only thing that was taken out of Tier Two. Oh, I'm sorry, since we put that on Tier One, we did eliminate the option to reduce one of the typists from 12 months to 10 months, and that's it. So it would be impossible to do, to just have one secretary there during the summer, me too, at all times then.
So may I just ask a follow-up question? The amount of money you have already in terms of the potential cuts listed in Tier One exceeds the amount that we are looking at in terms of a gap.
Correct.
So, and I just want that to be clear.
So, yeah, and so that difference is, what was it, 40,000?
534.
534. I know I have it here someplace, so, yep, 40,534. So your Tier One list has $40,534 more than is necessary if you're just looking at Tier One.
Questions about any of that?
I mean, this doesn't mean though, even though we don't necessarily need the dollar amount on Tier Two, that we are not considering Tier Two cuts.
Right.
Yeah. And that's not, nothing like that's set in stone at this point.
Exactly, exactly. And inversely, if, you know, some sort of argument is forwarded for further change or adaption, you know, adapting of Tier One, that could take place before we vote on the final one.
And what, if we found that some of these cuts were necessary or made sense, and they totaled above that dollar amount, what would that mean? If we actually said, there's $300,000 in cuts that we feel make sense, what would that mean?
Well, it would be two things. I mean, you could reduce our tax levy by that 300,000, so we would be under the tax levy as a possibility, or you could use that gap between 300,000 and the 215, which is about, excuse, 85,000. You could look to restore something that was taken out of the budget, or come up with other ideas to potentially add to the budget, whether it be, you know, personnel, or whether it be other equipment, or whatever, or it could just remain there until you figure out maybe what you may want to do, you know, use it for next year. Remember, we're just, we're just, you are voting on a dollar amount, the public is voting on a dollar amount. How things actually play out next year is really up to the board and everything, so what you have here in the budget isn't set in stone. You don't have to follow this budget plan. You can add people, you can reduce people, you never know with our population, people moving in, people moving out, and it happens all the time, and you're thinking out now for things that could happen out, you know, 15, 16 months, June of 2019. Who knows what's going to happen between then and now and then?
If we reduce the amount of the budget, that would potentially help us for next year if we were to, if we took it out, in theory.
In theory. I would never recommend going below what the tax levy cap is, because we did that the first year because we always thought, oh, we could just add it the next year. Well, they changed the rules after that, and for every year since then, it's like $135,000. We didn't collect that one year. That's $135,000 each and every year afterwards. So you're talking over a million dollars because of that one thing, not reaching to your tax cap. Since this has been in place, the school district has lost over a million dollars in funds because of not going right up to the limit. 2.51 is, you know, just going from one year to the next.
Laura?
Um, we've had some communication about the administrative portion of our budget, and I'm wondering if you could walk through what's included in that? It's not salaries.
Well, the first thing I want to go through is to, did I put it? I had it here. There it is. All right, so I'm passing around. So you can see our administrative percentages have been over since, I don't know, I think I went back about six or seven years, about to the, well, actually, we basically had to start keeping track of this stuff, because this all came about a few years ago to break the, our budget into three parts, just as a little bit of an education. Even though we're looking at as one number as the bottom line, we do have to break it up into three parts, administrative, program, and capital. And as you see these percentages here, they kind of go up, down a little bit, but as you take a look at these administrative numbers, you can see where, you know, as we start from the beginning, it starts to go down, but we see an increase, all right? That was the hiring of an assistant principal, and we see another increase due to the hiring of a Director of Technology and Information, but then we see them continually going down. If you see capital, it's continually going down, and that's a big, you know, it's not that we're putting any, we haven't done anything on the capital side, we didn't reduce the budget, but debt service is getting smaller and smaller, so they're a smaller part of the budget. As you see, program continues to increase, there is one little decrease, but the money we put towards program, which is instruction, has been going up every year except for one year. So, so, but here's where the issues come in, when you start comparing ourselves to other school districts. People that are locked in from eight, nine, 10 years ago when we had to start doing this. So when it started 10 years ago, I mean, give you an example, copiers. We put copiers in administration, for the most part. I'm going to say 85% of our copier cost is in administration. Maybe a little bit is in program, and it's in the area of special education, but for the schools, it's under the principals code. In some school districts, it's under 2110 Instruction, under the teacher codes. So instead of that being an administrative cost, in some school district, that's an instructional program cost, but to us, it's always been an administrative. So how schools code from one area to another? Another one that I know has come up is central data processing. Central data processing is for the, we have two people who are, work on the, on our server, who work on printers, they work with the staff to make sure all our equipment is running. We code it under central data processing, which is an administrative code. Some school district, you look, like, nothing, 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 because they got it coded to 2630, which is... it coded to 2630, which is computer-assisted instruction, and that's an instructional code. So some school districts code it here, some code it there, so it's hard to compare ourselves to other school districts, because it's just a history of where things have been coded over the years, and the state doesn't make any determination whatsoever and say, no, it's got to be here, it's got to be there. They don't do that. What you need to look at is, how is our relationship to our program doing? Are we putting more money towards instruction? Are we putting more money towards administration or capital? And as you can see by our percentages, less and less goes to our administration, less and less goes towards capital, more goes towards the program. So it's, it's hard to compare ourselves to other school districts. In some areas, you can. You can look at a certain area and take a look at it, but you really have to delve deep into it. You just can't look at it, you've got to know how they're coding things. You have to know how we're coding things. You have to know how that school district does it, because there's not one school district that does coding the same. Everybody does it differently. It's, it's the history of your school district, so it changes. So it's hard to make comparisons. It's easier to make a comparison of just your bottom line, or take a look at how their percentages change towards administration, program, and that. It does make a change. Now, things have happened over these years for administration. I mean, there's a lot more, APPRs, DASSA, there's a lot of things that have changed since, over the past 10 years. A lot of programs have been implemented that need oversight, and so, you know, that's, but also as a part of this, there's another thing called administrative ratio, and that compares your administration to just instruction. It takes capital out of it. It just compares administration to the program. So if you take a look at this, you see, when you add the program, which is instruction, to administration, administration starts at 14.56 and 11.12, and you can see it go down, but then you see it go back, and that's the hiring of eight, the assistant principal and the director, but you see it continue to go down. So we've consistently gone down, except for the hiring of the two administrators. Now, I've got to remember what administration is, what isn't. Administration is going to be you guys here, Board of Ed, your expenses, Superintendent, Business Office, Principal's Office, and it's everybody in the principal office, just not the principal, it's also their support staff. So, so when you take a look at it, it also involves, when you think about it, it's just, oh, it's the principal. No, it's the principal and their entire staff. And that's the same thing with special ed. Special ed has an administrative component to it with the, with the director and with their secretary. So even that's 2250, we pull that out and that's put in the administration. So, yeah, it's very difficult to compare ourselves to other schools. As you know, through the long-range planning, when we sit there and we try to compare ourselves, you've got to take things with a grain of salt and really know what those, how those numbers are put together. So this kind of gives us a history over the past six or seven years as to how that looks. As you see, it doesn't change too much. I mean, if you look from the first year, from 11.12 to currently with, as of the end of last year, it's about a 2% increase to the instructional side, about a half a percent increase to the administration side, and a decrease of about one and a half percent to the capital side, the operation and some debt service. So, you know, it's been fairly consistent, you know, across the board, as I see it.
So, just as a follow-up, so I'm reading this administrative ratio correctly, so in 2017, 18, it's roughly 15% administrative, so that would mean 85% of our budget goes to program and instruction?
When you put program.
As a percentage of program and administration.
Right.
Eighty-five percent of that now goes to program.
And the capital expenses are not included?
In this ratio, right?
Right, right. They're two separate ratios then.
Okay, that's really helpful.
So just to be clear, we learned a little bit about that this week and long-range planning, but, so even in this breakdown, which is, the state requires this three-part breakdown, every school has to do that.
Yep.
Even in this breakdown, the administrative code or the program code is different. There's not a requirement on what has to be in administrative code.
Right.
For every school.
Right, you tried to.
So even though it's broken down this way, and every school has to break it down, it's still.
Right.
It's rough. It's very rough.
It is. And what they don't want to see is wild swings back and forth in terms of what you have coded to administrative, or what you have coded to program. I mean, they want to see consistency. Is that correct? Well, they don't even look at it, but we're looking for consistency. But they do not prescribe exactly what goes into each.
Internal consistency.
And so, when someone asks about that, and, you know, they're assuming maybe it's just administrative salary and benefits, it's all of these things. It's our budget, it's all of these things that are not, that some people may not consider administrative.
Sometimes it's paper, it's the copier, it's the maintenance contracts, it's some BOSI services, depending on what it is, some of it's administrative, some of it's program. It's, it's not easy, and it's going to get even worse next year, because the ESA accounting is going to be, I don't even want to think about that right now. That's going to be a bear. That's going to be horrible. We don't know how prescriptive that's going to be.
I mean, gas.
But it may help to be able to compare everybody then, because even the federal government looking over things now will be when we report at the end of next year, they're going to want expenses by building.
So this is by the building per student?
Yeah, by building, so they can.
So that might be a better way to compare.
It might be.
Right.
Plus, they say we're going to get exactly how we're supposed to do it, so if everybody in the state follows it exactly the way the state says it, maybe we will then be able to compare ourselves. But the problem is, we may be able to compare ourselves by building, but not by district, because this is going to be building by building, reporting for the federal government. While the state still wants it the old-fashioned way, the federal government wants, I had to do one last year on the special ed side, it was, it took days and days and days to figure it out.
Tom, is the goal of that building-by-building accounting, so that, say, in a larger district, you would be sure there's no inequities?
Yeah.
One school's getting overfunded.
To us, it won't matter, because you can't compare us one elementary building to another elementary. It isn't going to happen. We only have one.
Yeah.
But for somebody like a Kingston, or Poughkeepsie, or Arlington, New York City, they're going to compare one elementary building against another one to see if there's any inequities. Because there'll be full-time equivalence, it's going to be.
But even that won't be accurate. I mean, you could have a building with a lot of veteran teachers, and you're going to show higher lumber than a building that has newer teachers.
Exactly.
And that, to that point, you know, if you have experienced veteran teachers, experienced veteran administrators, that's going to be reflected, right, in certain ways, and that's really a sort of a value call, and a value judgment in a way, if you, I think one question that was raised a while back in these conversations is, if you wanted to appoint teachers, right, at the kind of most beginning level, and hire teachers just based on the cost, right, in terms of their salary, would that be the right thing to do, when you have a search to, to appoint someone? You want the most qualified, best teacher, and sometimes that teacher is going to be experienced and come in at a different salary than, you know, a brand-new teacher. So I think, in that case, we have never been governed by, you know, looking at the price.
You want the best.
We've gone with the best. And so I think that is a kind of an interesting factor to take into consideration when you're looking at seniority and the longevity and service of any part of this whole.
Right, and I think that's something that we have here in RAB. We have, our staff are, they like to stay here, it's a good place to work, I think, so we end up having a lot of veteran staff, which is to our credit, but you don't see that in other districts a lot of the time.
Right, right, where there's higher turnover, yeah.
And I think that's another issue on the administrative side.
Yeah.
You take a look at our administration, I mean.
We have a very experienced.
We have an experienced staff, so that, so that can inflate our, a bit, but.
May I ask that this be provided on?
We'll post it on the website.
Yeah, on the website, because we're talking about a document not even the people here have access to right now, so if we could make that available.
Sure.
First thing tomorrow, that'd be great.
Be up in the morning.
Other questions? About the development process, yes?
We could just talk about our process. We have, till the 17th is when we're going to adopt the budget. We may or may not have a meeting next week, right? Just, just wondering what steps we're going to take.
Yeah, so the Board will need to give us some, some direction, perhaps after, again, you may want to discuss some of the personnel-related issues in executive session, but we need to walk out of here with some, with some direction as to what the Board wants to see on the 17th, or you could decide to also meet on the 10th to discuss this further. But the 17th is not the evening to start making decisions, it's the evening to approve that single number that, that you have to by law approve by the 19th. So that's really, the process has to go one of those two ways. It doesn't have to, but I don't think you want to be sitting here on the 17th, still trying to figure out the fine points of how, how this is going to work.
Thoughts?
Just to reiterate, I know it's been said, but just to reiterate, we're deciding on a number, we're not deciding on which things get picked from Tier One to Tier Two, or maybe something else will come up altogether. So obviously, decisions need to be made for moving things along in this new fashion, but we're not deciding on a specific number. I just want to make sure, since this is my first time on this side of the table instead of that side, that I have that right.
Yeah, obviously, the decision shouldn't be made in a vacuum, and we've been looking at this stuff since December, so it's not being made in a vacuum, but as, as a number of people have mentioned, things change. Children move in, employees leave, any number of things that would cause any school district to go back to its budget and say, well, we had budgeted for this money here, but now we need an additional bus run, so we've got to move some money from here to here to provide transportation, or whatever. I mean, I could give you hundreds of examples. That's why you don't approve a line item budget at this point in time. You approve a dollar figure that then you're going to implement during the course of the coming year.
Dan?
I think as far as, you know, what, what people understand, I mean, we're deciding whether we're going to put a budget forward that's within the tax cap, which would mean at this point, making that dollar amount of cuts, or if we were going to do something different. Last year, we did something different, and that's really what the choice, but the decision that this Board would be making ultimately.
That's an option, too. That definitely is an option. You could exceed the cap.
I mean, that's what we did last year. We're just pointing out what the options are for.
But I think it's probably worth saying that we've spent a lot of time looking at these potential cuts, and, I mean, in a good faith way, I mean, there's a sort of an understanding in terms of how the Board is interacting with the Superintendent and the administration around priorities, values, and, you know, broad strokes, right, in terms of the kinds of choices that are being made. Am I correct?
As far as I'm concerned, you are, yeah.
So it's not like completely like, well, anything else could, you know, transpire, I think, is a bit of a roadmap in that sense, yeah. Other thoughts, Mark?
I think it's fair to say that, you know, we're within range of getting to the tax levy cap number. You know, just looking at some of these items that are on these lists, I think it's possible to get close to the tax cap number. There would be, not to say that there won't be any pain, but I think it's possible to do without, you know, less pain than we're looking at, you know, a couple weeks ago. So I'd like to kind of go through these numbers myself and see where we can get without causing minimal.
Exactly.
And, and the Board can certainly decide, does not have to decide tonight, that will meet next Tuesday. I mean, if the Board wants to let us know tomorrow, or the day after, or the day after, and we need, obviously, a little bit of lead time so we can, you know, publicize a meeting, that can happen. If you want to tell us tonight, yeah, we definitely want to meet next Tuesday, as well as, again, on the 17th to adopt the budget, you could tell us tonight, but you don't have to tell us tonight. We just need at least, I would say, by the end of the week.
Okay, for public notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are there questions about the substance of what has been shared with us this evening at this point, and I think we can probably, if there are personnel-related questions, address them in executive session, but are we comfortable arriving at a decision about whether or not to meet next week, either at the end of this evening or shortly thereafter? Yeah? Okay, good. Then let's move on to our Board Committee reports. I am the Facility Committee's reporter. We spent pretty much our entire meeting of the Facilities Committee, March 22nd, talking about, well, there was first a matter that came before us about the possibility of, with the capital project, potentially making some sort of official statement about working with New York State Registered Apprenticeship Programs with contractors as the work begins and as we begin to put work out for bid. And we talked about this at some length of, certainly, it's, these are laudable programs and programs that we would very much like to see the district be able to access if it turns out to be the case that the bid is the competitive bid for the district. At the same time, we didn't think it was advisable to bind ourselves only to contractors and builders that have apprenticeship programs. So I think that's where we got to with that particular question. And then we moved on to talking about safety and security measures. As we know, there have been many concerns that have been shared with us from different constituencies in the district, and the Facilities Committee seems to be the de facto place where some of those concerns are being worked through. And I will just outline some of the concrete measures that have already taken place in terms of auditing and reviewing our, our safety and security procedures. Sergeant Dunn of the Police Department has met with the district to discuss SRO coverage and cost, and that is under consideration right now. And we talked about having arrivals and departures at our school buildings be incorporated, the time when people, students are coming into and out of the building have more police presence in the area at those times. The safety team at CLS met in mid-March. The BMS and RHS safety team was scheduled to meet the same week we were talking, and because of a lot of weather-related cancellations and rescheduleings, there were some delays with that. We talked about the installation of interior hallway cameras in all buildings, the work that's been completed, and the functionality of the, those cameras, how the footage can be used and viewed from off-site by police and others as needed in an emergency situation. We talked about the review and reform of keeping the buildings of the doors, the door buildings locked at BMS, RHS, and at Chancellor from the conclusion of evening cleaning through the arrival of the greeter on duty in the morning. We also talked about how our capital project will support safety and security upgrades, including keyless entry system, providing access to staff and entry into the building, as well as a camera microphone system at our entrances. Further recommendations are fully expected to be coming out of the safety teams. We know those groups have been very active, and they have been really incredibly articulate in forwarding recommendations to us. Members of the group are being joined by law enforcement to audit current procedures and to improve them, and we talked at some length about fast-tracking, the work that will be coming through the capital project, and also even front-loading certain things in advance of that, given the longer of going through some of the expedited process of review in Albany.
So just kind of let you know that I know that our architects are in the process of, of looking to get the voice-over IP system for the phone, so that we can install the security system, but just to let you know. security system, but just to let you know, it will cost us extra because they're going to be put on old doors currently, and then the following summer, the new doors will come in, so we're going to have to switch them around, so there'll be an extra charge to do that.
Extra cost, okay.
But we will be able to have that security system.
For the year, the interim year.
Ready for September 1st.
That's excellent.
With a whole new phone system too, so that's going to have a lot of capabilities, like some of them will have like screens on them, so when somebody buzzes you in, you'll actually be able to see who's there and be able to ask them directly what their business is.
Questions? Yes?
So as of March 22nd, we didn't, we had nothing new about the status of the capital project, whether we'd be able to start.
That's correct.
Will we have any sense of that before April 17th? Because my concern is some of these security issues, I mean, if we're not going to start the capital project this summer, you know, there are some of those things we might want to do before that, and we'd have to factor that into our budgeting. I don't know that we'd want to wait another year or half a year, you know, to do some of those, so.
Well, the good thing about the, about the security system we're looking at with the access and with the phone system, those are on state contracts, so it's not like we're going to be.
You don't have to go out to bid.
Go through our general contractor and bid in that. We just need the state to approve the project, and that should happen before the end of the year. It won't happen to the point before the end of the year that get bids out, but because it's approved and all these items that we're talking about are on state bids, I know our architect right now is putting that together, so that as soon as we get approval from the state, we'll put a purchase order out to them and set it up for installation. Only because those pieces don't have to be bid. They're not bid.
Because they're on state projects. So all of those secure items we're talking about, could happen, should be able to happen this summer no matter what?
Not all the security things, but the phone system and then the door access system will be in place.
So what could not be in place? What?
Oh, I mean, I think, I'm trying to think, I think, I know there was talk about putting, and I don't think we can talk about certain things in public, so I don't think I should probably talk about that.
That's fine, we don't have to talk about them here. If we could know before we have to make the budget decision what those are and what the costs would be.
I would not count on knowing by April 17th.
From SEDO.
Yeah, about the approval.
Well, if we could know the difference in money, we might, you know, I just, I would hate to put off any security issues for more than a year. So I don't know if we could know the dollar amount and.
Well, it doesn't seem like those things that we discussed, I mean, I would, I would say it's highly likely that we'll be able to do them this summer.
Well, some of them, right? You just said some of them and some of them not.
Well, I'm, well, we can.
Well, maybe if we could figure that, which ones we could and which ones we couldn't.
And roughly, what do we cost?
Roughly, what do we cost?
What do we cost?
So that we can figure that into our.
We could probably get those estimates from our.
Right, yeah. I mean, we won't have any estimates, but I.
The biggest thing is the phone system, and you can't pay for the phone system out of this budget. Those are too expensive.
Does Facilities meet again before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
In April. Oh, it's April.
Not before April 17th.
No.
Not before the 17th.
Well, maybe we can move over.
I'll look it up.
Maybe we could move up our meeting for Facilities.
I'll take a look, and I'll give you the date later, so we don't hold up the meeting.
Yes, depends on the date.
Did you find it?
But your point is, is well.
It's April 19th.
April 19th, yeah, no, we'd have to move it up. We'd have to move it up.
So we can talk about that.
Okay, just so we have some more to think of.
Okay. So long-range planning.
That's me. So some of this Tom has kind of talked about. Tom kind of updated us, we've had some, we had some comments and questions come to us about why other districts spend no money in certain categories or a lot less money than we do, so we were trying to understand why that is. And Tom already talked about it a little bit tonight. Basically, the state does not require districts to code things in the same way, so we looked specifically at one example, which was attendance, you know, why we were spending over $100,000 and other districts, we were spending nothing or spending as little as maybe $32,000. So when you look at our attendance, we have, we have staff members in each building, some of them only spend a small percentage of their time doing attendance, so part of that is in our budget. We have some supplies in that budget, and then in our budget, we have school tools in there. That's used for attendance, but it's also used for grades and other things. So another school, for example, may put that in administrative, in guidance, and somewhere else, and the staff members, they may just keep in their, in their other roles, so that would show no attendance if we did that. So that's kind of an example of why it's really difficult to compare school without knowing where they, how they staff their buildings, how they code things, it's kind of impossible to compare items like that. So we walked through that. What else? We were looking at the curriculum budget, and for instance, there's summer work in there that our teachers do that's included in the curriculum, but there's also summer work that's included in a different part of the budget because it's part of the teacher's contract. So it's a similar item, but it's in two different parts of budget. We taught, we started talking about substitutes. We looked at, Tom gave us a document, about eight years' worth of expenses, and the swing is pretty, can be pretty high, and the range for substitutes, and this is long-term and short-term substitutes, that all, all our substitutes can run from about $122,000 up to $437,000, so the swing is great there. We currently hire certified substitutes. Joe let us know that we can hire non-certified substitutes, but there is a limit on that, you can't just, all your substitutes can't be that way. I don't know that we knew the actual.
It's 40 and 90, you can get away with for additional days to 90.
There's a shortage of substitutes in New York. Our practice currently is if we don't have a substitute, we sometimes will, we pay teachers to use on their free periods to substitute in the classrooms. Other districts have hired like a full-time substitute to keep on staff, so that's something that we talked about. We're not sure if that would save us money or cost more money or how that would work. You know, really, for this issue, you kind of have to, we'd have to spend more time and look at that and see if there's any trends or any way, you know, that that could be predicted or anything that we could do there. And that's long-range planning.
Questions? Long-range planning. Okay. So, good news. What is good news?
State aid was good news.
The state was holding a little bit of good news.
It is good news, and we should thank our legislators, and we did talk to them, and we did get more money, so we're quick to blame them for what we don't get.
Yes, thank you to our legislators.
We should thank them for, we're very happy to have any extra.
That's very true, that's very true. Yes. I actually have to say, I think something that strikes me as good news is the level of engagement that we've seen around this budget process, the amount of communication that we have received on the Board, really from faculty, from staff, from people who work in all different parts of the district, from parents. It's, I don't think I've ever actually seen this level of thoughtful, engaged, informed questioning and suggestion. It's heartening to see that people work very hard to understand a process which I think, as people use this word frequently, is not transparent. It's a process that is complicated, it's technical, it's hard to read across districts and to discern patterns while at the same time, we are committed to doing so, and we have received a tremendous amount of good faith, constructive suggestion from all quarters. To me, that's good news. We don't have a community where people throw up their hands and sort of assume that they have no impact, that their ideas won't be listened to. And of course, our challenge is to figure out how to be guided by and respect all the information we're being given and the hard work that's gone into sharing it with us. So to me, that's good news. Some are good news? Okay. Old business.
I don't have any. Nothing?
Public comment. Another opportunity to comment.
Hi, I'm Victor Britton, committee member and a teacher and vice president of the Teacher One thing I wanted to say is just, you know, even though I know you guys are preparing a budget that's a number, there are some people that are very anxious about impacts to their programs and to their jobs, and so if we could be mindful of that in any way so that they could get some clarity. And the longer it goes, I worry about, you know, losing a couple of good people that just can't deal with the uncertainty. When you think about the, you know, it sounds like you're narrowing down to the tier-one cuts, I just want to remind you that there was, there was other program changes prior to those tier-one options, and so there's, you know, the impactful thing that I keep in mind is the English department that, due to the retirement at the middle school, were in effect, you know, cutting programs. So that's just something to keep on your radar, because I think at this point, you kind of, you've had some good news, and you're kind of, all right, so close, but that's a big deal. And I did spend some time looking at enrollment numbers, and it's complicated with the different classes and the changes at the high school, at least in the next year or two, the numbers really don't dip in accordance with that sort of move, so it's going to be impactful with whether it be electives or AS classes or AP classes, it's going to be detrimental. And the other thing that I mentioned last time was trying to balance, you know, the, what's happening with the cuts between programs and between different units. In listening to what Tom was saying earlier, I think it does provide some clarity if you tend to look at salaries and benefits and not the broader programs of those things. It is hard to sort of compare, but I think that sort of clears the thought a little bit. So in any case, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan St. Clair, teacher, Rhinebeck resident now, and president of Rhinebeck Teachers' Association. So it was over a year ago now that the Rhinebeck Teachers' Association negotiation team started conversations with the Board and the district to settle our contract, which expired last June, and we're still without a contract, so we would respectfully ask, and I'll ask on behalf of the teachers, that we get a contract done soon. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments come forward?
Hi, Terry Kubiak, math teacher, Rhinebeck resident, taxpayer, and I appreciate all of you and your hard work. I also too would appreciate you looking at all of the items on all of the tiers, and I do notice that this is starting to really have an impact on members of the faculty and staff. So I know that you had mentioned that certain things don't have to be decided on right away, that you just have to come down to a number if unclear, but I know that there's people that were sitting here that were wondering if their job was going to be that one, and so I just think that, you know, it's kind of in these times difficult, and so if you could respect their demands as well. I do appreciate all your work, so thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. People and their lives are very much involved here. Yes.
Do I make one last comment for you?
Yes.
Do I get a second chance?
Sure, of course.
I sit here again, or stand there again, and I'm frustrated, because we just had a ton of discussion about cost, and nobody talked about students and outcomes and achievements. And that's where it starts, and that's what we all have to be in here for, right? We're all here to educate the kids, you're all here especially, to educate the kids, and we all have to be in this together. And I'm just going to say, as an outsider, we need to be really careful not to get into an us versus them, because this is all about the kids, and we've got to start there. And I find it frustrating when I sit in any of these budget meetings and there's no discussion about what's best for the kids, what are the outcomes, what works, how do we measure our success, how do we know where we're doing really well, how do we know where we're struggling, where we need to put resources, where we don't need to put resources. And I will tell you, having done this a whole bunch of times in the private sector, okay, the biggest challenge of prioritizing isn't knowing what to do, it's figuring out what you're not going to do. Because everybody starts with, we want to be all things to all people at all times, and then we all laugh about it because nobody can do it, and we have to figure out where we need to focus. And in order to do that, you have to understand where you are, and it's all about outcomes. We're here for the kids, for them to succeed, for them to be the best educated, for them to get the best out of their experience in this school district, and if we don't start from there, we're only going to go backwards. That's it. I thought I'd be short.
Thank you, thank you. Your comment. Absolutely.
He's gone. Just share with us. I do want to say that, I mean, I know personally, you can even ask the custodian, I am here until 11:20 PM, and they kick me out. So when it comes to the kids, I don't want my kids to miss a beat, and I am extremely dedicated, and when my students come in first in Duchess County on the New York State Math Exam, I'm sometimes told, and not for anything, but, you know, we compare ourselves to Westchester. Well, I can honestly say that, you know, we're not Westchester money, but I have to say that we do put our students first, above and beyond anything. My students are like my children, and I can tell you that, don't mess with me with my kids. I'm sorry. That's how I am.
Well, that, thank you for that, and it was good for us all to remember why we're here and what it's all about. It's time for other. Is there other?
President. As anyone around the table knows, I represent the Board of Rhinebeck Thompson-Nezroth Park Committee, and I'd like to just mention that the Park Committee is very appreciative of the work that the government, the Day of Service upcoming in May, so we look forward to working with the school district.
That's great.
That's great.
Oh, and speaking of young people, a number of them need to have their forms signed, so please, you can approach any of us, students.
We can all sign.
We'll just, we'll call a timeout and sign forms for you if you'd like.
I saw that they were trying to leave, and I saw your paper.
You guys are really good. You stayed longer than almost anybody, so you're all way back there too, so thank you for coming.
I can't hear from anyone.
Get them home.
Bye, everyone.
You can't stay.
Well, the kids have got to get off the road.
Thank you for coming. Bye. Thank you.
I got his license yesterday, so he was shopping last night.
All right, we're done with others, so, yes.
I just, all our staff left, but we still, we still have minutes.
Somebody's still here.
I just want to say that I think, you know, on behalf of Personnel Committee, that we're also eager, eager to settle the teacher's contract, that we have been, and other contracts have been out for a while, but we have been meeting regularly for over a year, you know, working through the process, you know, we're just as eager as they are to have it settled, so I just, for the minutes, for anybody that's listening to make sure.
For the record.
I know, we've met for, you know, so many hours, and we're definitely working the process, and we're definitely just as eager as they are, so.
We're invested, invested in an, in an outcome.
Yes.
So let us move to our action items. May, is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent sheet?
Where goes our last customer?
Fine. Okay, seeing that no one wishes to remove anything, may I have a motion to approve the consent sheet?
Second.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous, the motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and approval of the modifications to the following board policies. Number 6150, budget transfers, and number 6251, sale and lease of district property.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2017-18 school tax bills totaling $4,807.06 in reduction adjustments, and make appropriate refunds to the property owner if required?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following permanent civil service appointments. Laura Dettore, teacher aide, effective 4/10/18, and Whitney Drucker, secretary to the superintendent, effective 4/19/18.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adjust the work hours of Patricia Yule, monitor, from 8:45 AM to 2:30 PM, to 10:50 AM to 1:50 PM, effective March 21, 2018?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of the following individuals to provide teacher aide services for 1 to 2 or 2.5 hours per day for each day of varsity track and softball practices, and/or for home contests as necessary and appropriate, effective for the spring 2018 interscholastic athletic season, effective March 19, 2018, in accordance with the 2017-18 ante-salary schedule. Kathy Smith, track. Lucy Munger, softball.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to recertify Edwin Davenport, John Camitzer, Brett King, Fern Lox, Mark Byrd, Stephen Jensen, and Emily Davison as qualified lead evaluators of teachers, and Joseph Allen and Marvin Krebs as qualified lead evaluators of principals during the 2017-18 school year, having successfully completed the recertification training requirement prescribed in 8 NYCRR 30-2.9B.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? May I have a, that's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the Reinbeck Central School District 2018-19 school calendar?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just wondering what the revision is.
Yeah, okay, so the revisions are two minor ones. One being the days called out, the makeup formula at the bottom, that was incorrect in the previous iteration. And also, we had Friday, September 1 listed on the September calendar, and September 1 is a Saturday. So we just took that line out of there, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Well, I was waiting for any more questions before I say something.
I didn't have another question. I just thank you for the work you put in this, and I hope that this will end our, any issues we may have with snow days next year.
Well, you know, we can only hope.
Disarray.
So I just wanted to let the board know that, and you may already be aware, I'm not sure if I mentioned this to you or not, but I did send a copy of the revised calendar, not this exact draft, but everything here, except for what I just mentioned in response to Laura, to the building, to the bargaining unit presidents. I met with Susan St. Clair, the Teachers' Association president. I think it was the first day of our so-called spring break, and she requested that I also mail it to all of the, all of the staff, which I was going to, but she got to me before I did. So I did. So every member of the staff received a copy of this at the beginning of that spring break week, with a request to review it, and to let their bargaining unit representatives know if they had any feedback, and to let me know by tonight, that it was likely that I would be asking the board to approve this calendar. I got an email, or Tom, it came through Tom, got an email on Monday, yesterday, from Regina Messa, saying that was okay with the ante unit. And then, literally, as I was walking down the hallway, I got a letter from Susan St. Clair, telling me she hoped I got this before the board meeting started, and with some comments. I just want to let you know what the comments were from the teacher's side of the group, just so you're aware, okay? I mean, none of this will knock your socks off, but I just think it's appropriate that you know. And I'm reading it off my phone in several different font sizes, so I'm doing a little squint here. I would suggest that we take, this is not Susan, this is members of her unit who responded to her. "I would suggest that we take the extra two days and put one on the 22nd of April, and not the 28th of May. It is very difficult when you have a large break before exams in June. Since spring break is so late, we will know by then if we will need to come in for that extra day. I would add to spring break and not to Memorial Day." So I had already changed that, actually. So I'm not exactly sure where that was coming from, but I originally had had a day off on May 24 and May 28.
Oh, all right. But now it's back in.
The previous, no, it's not back in.
No, it's not. It went from last two weeks ago.
That's right. And Fern Lox had given me some feedback a couple of weeks ago, that she thought that wasn't a good idea to have such a long break at the end of the year, when kids are studying for, prepping for regencies, and blah, blah, blah. Okay, and so I agreed. That's why I moved it to the new school holiday day on May 3. Okay, so just stay with me for a couple of minutes. I'm sorry if this is tedious, but it kind of is. Another comment. I'm putting this in writing to give feedback about the calendar. Number one, remove one or both Jewish holidays in September. Number two, people who observe, oh, yeah, people who observe these will still take them off. We need additional snow day buffers. And number two, move the superintendent conference days in October and November to March. And the last comment was, a few teacher, a teacher had a valid concern about the loss of test prep time before the exam periods in June. Okay, that's already been addressed. "A few teachers approached me on Tuesday about the calendar. There seemed to be consensus on exchanging the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which we've already moved, for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It seems that more students and faculty travel for Thanksgiving than for Memorial Day weekend. The other suggestion was to move the superintendent's conference day in February to the Monday after Easter. This would allow for two possible days we'll have to give back, should we go over in snow days again, without affecting spring break week. Eastern Monday, superintendent's conference day could be changed to student day, and Friday, Memorial Day could also be a day we give back." Susan's personal comment to me was, she'd rather have the day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving than one of these days later in the year. So those are the comments. I just mentioned to you my concern with putting any, either of those days on Monday, April 22nd, abutting spring break, is that that will be spring break for some people. They'll plan their plane rides back on Monday, and not earlier, so as to be at school on Monday. So I, my gut feeling is, that's not a good plan. I'll have the same issue if we run over, only with a different week, instead of when we had it this year. So that's why I didn't put it there. And, yeah, I too would prefer the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, but we had it that way a few years ago, and is what it is. And it's before a holiday, so teachers couldn't use a personal leave day. So anyway, I just wanted to give you my rationale for setting this up the way I did. Anyway, if you want to change, let me know, but this is the best I can muster, given the concerns that I've heard, and the concern about needing those days later in the year, so that if we run out of days again this coming year, we don't get in the same jam.
Again, thank you for all the work you put into this, and asking for all the feedback, you know, the great comments from our staff, thinking it through. I mean, I think, for me, this is the only way to kind of, to hopefully avoid, most people make plans over spring break, so adding a day there, just like you said. I think in May, you know, the calendar's here, people would know not to, not to make firm plans in May, because those are the days that are going to be given back if we need that to happen, and it has happened the last several years. It's kind of the new norm. So I think that this makes the most sense. I mean, just, I had a, I don't know if parents actually read all the way down to the bottom, because I have, parents ask me about, you know, they didn't understand the give back thing, so people should read the bottom and understand if we go over our snow days, what it means, what days they'll lose, so maybe don't make any plans past spring break that you can't undo.
Yes.
I would also, I would also, yes, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I would also just want to point out to the board that commencement for next year is still up in the air. That's the question mark there. Ed and I have been talking about it. I suggested he talk to his colleagues to get some sense of a consensus around the county, not that we have to do what anybody else does about that. You know, Saturday, the 29th, is awfully late, so I have a concern about that. Not the end of the world, but it is, I mean, the whole week's late, let's face it. Ed was looking at possibly Friday, the 28th. We talked about doing it on like Saturday, the 22nd. His concern was that there are still enough regents' exams the following week that seniors typically are taking like chemistry, you know, some of the sciences. He's concerned about doing a commencement with kids who, I mean, not that, not that he's thinking, well, yeah, that they don't know, that they...
Yeah, that's a real concern.
And I said to him, well, why don't you just give them a blank diploma case? His concern was having kids sitting there with nothing in their diploma case, and, you know, I certainly respect his opinion deeply, so that's still up in the air. I'm just letting you know.
And I think there's a bigger concern, if you do it the weekend before. Kids still need to study for those tests, but now you've got relatives there, you're doing certain things, so. It would be very hard for the 22nd. I think it's too, it interrupts the student too much.
It would diminish the joyous nature of the occasion, for those who still have work to do.
That might be a good thing.
Well, I thought.
Anyway, just wanted to let you know what the rationale was, and why, where it is, and why it's there.
Well, here's one of the questions, too, that Ed asked of us, is, would you be willing to do it like in the morning, or during the day, as opposed to be waiting till 6 o'clock at night? Would you be willing to do it earlier on a Friday?
With sun in your face, that'd be...
I mean, like way less hot.
Yeah, why not? I don't know.
No, the sun would be behind us.
Yeah, it would be, no, it would be higher up, so it won't be in our eyes, at least. It will be honest, but it won't be in our eyes.
Whenever you have it, their families will be there. It's their child's graduation, they'll be there.
It's the extraneous.
Friday night sounded like the best thing to me.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Ed work it out, but I just want to let you know why it's a question mark on the calendar. That's all.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this?
I would hope so.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion moving to executive session to talk about the appointment of certain individuals?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. We're moving into executive session.
Okay.